Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see a big crowd here session today. So we got two members of the public, maybe three. Well, welcome, everyone. Today is June 24, 2025. It's 1:00 p.m. This is a Prescott City Council Study Session. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
We have one item on our agenda today, presentation and discussion regarding the Willis Street Traffic and Warrant Study. Take it away, Ian Mattingly.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, I'm Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager for City of Prescott Public Works. Today's study session will focus on the recently completed Willis Street Traffic and Warrant Study. City staff initiated this study late in 2024 to evaluate this important section of Willis Street as a first step in addressing traffic concerns and planning for the future. We have Alyssa Whitten with Burgess and Niple here, who she led the team that conducted the work. So she's joining us today to present the study purpose, findings, and recommendations. And then she's going to go through that study. Like any study session, feel free. You can ask questions as she goes. Staff will step up if we have questions that are beyond what she can answer. Matt Colleen is also here. He's just familiar with it, especially in the aspect of the Greenways Trail and some bike things and input. And then, once she concludes her presentation, the last slide is an add-on from staff so we can talk about the next steps and some other information. So with that, I'll have Alyssa come up. Thank you. There's the button. Yeah, and that's on all the time.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. As Ian said, my name's Alyssa Whitten. I'm a Senior Traffic Engineer with Burgess and Niple. I'm a Registered Professional Engineer in Arizona. I'm also a Registered Professional Traffic Operations Engineer. I'm excited to be here with you today to present the findings of this study. So our study segment was Willis Street between McCormick and Montezuma with some primary focus on the McCormick Street intersection, the Greenways Trail Crossing, and the Granite Street intersections. Some background that we received as we began the study was that there's been an increase in traffic volumes in recent years, just with some recent development that's been going on. The Founding Fathers is a primary example of that, right? Located right at Granite Street. We also heard that this segment of Willis Street is used as a connection for Sheldon Street, which is, you know, discontinuous between McCormick and Montezuma. Finally, we heard Willis Street is often used as sort of a downtown bypass route for folks looking to avoid kind of the heavier pedestrian and traffic activity on Gurley Street. So with that, our study reviewed traffic operations as it pertains to vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycle activity along Willis Street. Our study included analysis of potential all-way stop control and potential traffic signal control at multiple intersections. And a primary objective of our study was to develop any infrastructure recommendations that we may suggest in order to enhance operations for the various roadway users. Just a quick touch on the data that we collected for this study. So we collected vehicle, pedestrian, and bicycle counts in order to support our all-way stop control and traffic signal control warrant analyses. Average daily vehicle volumes for this segment, we found, were just over 7,000 vehicles. We also collected speed data. We found that our-
Councilwoman Moore had a question.
Please.
Sorry, but my question's on this very page.
Absolutely.
I was concerned that the data collection occurred in December, which is maybe a slow time of year for downtown Prescott, both in terms of trail use, bicycle use, and just tourist. December 17th, a Tuesday, I don't know that that would be indicative of maybe Tuesday, June 24th, where there's maybe a lot more trail users, a lot more bicyclists, a lot more traffic. So I just wanted to raise that issue as far as the data.
Sure, absolutely. So to speak to time of year, the one thing I can speak to is, school was in session. So in terms of typical residential users, this was found to be representative of that. In terms of tourism in the area, it's a great point, especially along the trail, we may see higher trail users for the pedestrian and bicycle counts at Granite, or I'm sorry, at the Greenways Trail Crossing.
And possibly even more traffic in June, just because we have a lot of tourists, people come up out of the valley to get out of the heat, and they like to spend time in Prescott. And it just really increases our traffic in that touristy downtown area.
Sure, absolutely. I'll move forward. And Ian, maybe we can touch on that? Perfect. So we also collected speed data for this segment, and maybe that'll be another conversation. Eighty-fifth percentile speeds were found to be 25 miles per hour. Another interesting data point was only 1% of the vehicles were observed traveling over 35 miles per hour. So that's kind of a good spread, not too many people falling outside of a comfortable range that we'd like to see. We collected crash data from the ADOT database for the most recently available complete five years. Eighty percent of the crashes were no injury crashes. There were no fatal crashes observed. And just over half of the crashes were angle or left turn crashes, which are typical crash types that we see at intersections. As I mentioned, with this study, we performed an all-way stop control warrant analysis at both the McCormick Street and Granite Street intersections. So what does this mean? With this analysis, we evaluate if stopping all legs of the intersection is warranted and recommended based on national criteria. The national standard that we use is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, commonly referred to as the MUTCD. This is published by Federal Highways and adopted by Arizona State. We evaluated five warrant criteria as found in the MUTCD. We found that always stop control was warranted at Willis Street-Granit Street intersection. However, it was not warranted at the McCormick Street intersection. So at Granite Street, we took our analysis one step farther. We evaluated if a traffic signal was warranted. This analysis was also performed based on four applicable warrants found in the MUTCD. With this, we found that Granite Street was not, did not warrant a traffic signal.
Councilwoman Ferworth?
Thank you, Mayor. Alyssa, or Ian, who's ever, this is, you know, not my area of expertise. I was surprised to see that if the answers, two yeses and three nos, the answer is yes overall. So what's the breakpoint between, would it be one yes would get us there, too?
Yes, absolutely. So if any warrant is met, the warrant is considered met. So it's just that there are five potentially applicable criteria to the intersection. They may not all be applicable every single time. So meeting one warrant is satisfying the criteria.
Yeah. So, and basically, I wanted to make a comment regarding the traffic volumes and some of the data. So you can see here that the one that really, you know, talks about warrants and volume is warrant D, eight-hour volume. And I believe when we reviewed the materials, you know, while the numbers might have been low, they weren't substantially low compared to June or summer. We don't typically look at, like, for instance, a, you know, a July 4th weekend to determine whether or not we meet a warrant. But the numbers were not close enough that we would have then triggered an additional warrant based on volumes, in my opinion. So while our numbers are low, it really doesn't impact any facet of the study, especially when you consider that we met, like, for instance, Willis Street and McCormick Street, because we have a, we use, the 90-degree is basically the through movement, and the side street is that. The increase in traffic that we would have seen on northbound McCormick is not such that it would have triggered, like, a stop warrant there. So it didn't impact anything regarding the warrants or the traffic control results. While it's interesting that there might be more traffic, it really didn't, it doesn't impact the outcome.
And I'll touch on one more item. I don't have it in my slides, but we did also look at projecting traffic. We looked up to a 20-year horizon, and we did not find that the warrant was met. So to Ian's same point, we're still well below the threshold.
So growing the traffic volumes still did not trigger those warrants based on volume. And, you know, she can go into it more, but you can see that it was triggered on visibility restrictions, which I think we know are there at Granite Street. That's why people have such problems with the intersection, because they come over the bridge and there's parking that's causing those things. And then the other factors that she mentioned. So I'll let her continue.
Councilwoman Moore?
Yeah, you might want to stay up there, Ian. But, I mean, I read through the report, and maybe I'm jumping the gun a little bit, but it's interesting. My office on the third floor has the bird's eye view of Willis Street. And there are times when the traffic on Willis Street, because of the stoplight and the duration of the stoplight, particularly cars wanting to make a left-hand turn off of Willis onto Montezuma, that the traffic will actually back up all the way to Granite. And I think that's where we're experiencing a problem with left-hand turns, like people trying to get out of Granite onto Willis, but the traffic's backed up and it's blocking their visibility. My concern is if we put an all-way stop at Granite, now we're going to be backing traffic up to the bridge and to McCormick. And there's no stop on McCormick. Any southbound traffic turning left onto Willis doesn't have to stop. But then there's going to be a stop at Granite, and there's the bridge, and there's going to be a walkway. And I'm just concerned it's going to maybe create a new problem by putting a four-way stop at Granite with traffic coming off of McCormick where they don't have to stop, and then a crosswalk where they haven't had to stop.
So currently, under, you know, no stop control going eastbound on Willis Street, you, if, so you're saying that right now, sometimes you see traffic backing up and blocking the intersection, which obviously, that's not something we want to happen. But that likely could store maybe two cars, three cars. So it sounds like it's more of an issue for maybe the management of our signal timing at Willis and Montezuma. And so, you know, if we have a problem like that already, where they're starting to back up and gridlock an intersection, then we're going to need to focus on some changes there so that we can solve that issue and not compound it. But that's not really, you know, that's not the reason not to control this intersection, because it's going to bring so many other benefits, safety and otherwise.
It's the left-hand turn lane that I think is causing the problem. There's very few cars that are going straight through Willis. A few, one or two, but most of it's, and then because it's hard to stage in that line, because then it backs up into the regular traffic lane.
Yeah. And so I'll note that we can make adjustments. The good thing is that intersection is a standalone intersection. We don't currently have that in any kind of coordinated system, and we don't plan to do that because of the downtown complexities, especially at the scramble just to the south. But we can look at that and try to improve that time and give it more time, clear that out more, especially as we make these changes. Yeah.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Ian, let me ask you another question. So I do, I go to all that stuff downtown, and it's been great to watch this business build up and build up and build up. But when you, this was done and finalized in 2023, I've noticed with this business that he's now morphing his business model, and they're doing a lot of outdoor closing off the street functions, different events. And I'm glad to see you have some data on that, but it's a very, very dangerous situation if you spend a lot of time down there. And I think the change in the business model should have been considered. And did you guys do that? Did you take into effect that this last year, at least maybe year and a half, he's actually really changed his business model and done a lot of more outside events, essentially doubling the amount of people that can participate in his business?
So you're talking about Founding Fathers and some of the things going on here?
Yeah.
I think ultimately, you know, the four-way stop is not being driven by the amount of volume coming off of either the north leg by Founding Fathers and the park, or whatever we do there, or the south. What's really driving it is that the conditions are such with site visibility and just the congestion that's going on in that area, that for safety purposes and just, you know, to reduce some of these collisions and things, we need to control that intersection. So we didn't do a detailed analysis about, will his future events double the traffic? But certainly, the four-way, apart from what he does over there and blocks traffic internally on the north side, and whether that's allowed or not, the four-way will help traffic on the other three legs immensely. And so, no, we didn't look at, like, hey, what is he doing with his business model? What's he going to do with increases or decreases? But it's meeting the warrant based on operational and safety issues. So it's kind of beyond that. And sorry, I didn't get a better answer, but that's really-
That's okay. Okay, this is a crazy question, okay? But I spent a lot of time over there, not at Founding Fathers necessarily, but in the general area. If you look out the back, where APS has their holding area, and we own that property, has anybody ever explored a back exit out of there, maybe under that bridge, or I don't know? Has any creative thinking gone on? I know the Granite Creek people have a heart attack, but-
So I believe that a portion of, yeah, the big APS yard that then connects over to the low-water crossing on Lincoln?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm familiar with it, because I think when we first started with this whole city hall thing, we talked about some deals with maybe an exchange of parking areas for our fleet. One of the issues over there is that they are, they have a unique driveway access where they're blocked out, and then it's private property. So I've never heard any discussion regarding, like, some kind of pass-through or way for them to get through. But I do know-
Not through the hotel?
No, no, not through the hotel. Under the bridge, and then through the APS yard and out.
Or even back through the warehouse. There's another exit back there, and I think we own that property as well.
Yeah, it's just where you get to. I think you, maybe you can get to Madison, you can get some of those Dexter neighborhood areas.
Has anybody explored that?
I will say, I've never seen a plan to connect those things. We are doing a Dexter, it's called Dexter Near North Business District SS4A Grant. We just had a kickoff. So it's going to focus on the Dexter neighborhood and, you know, multimodal pedestrian, bicycle use, and things like that. But there's going to be public input and opportunities for us to hear ideas and things like that. So maybe some of that stuff will come out. There's also additional study going to happen through Simpo in the downtown area. It's going to focus on some of this, too, Willis and the larger thinking and more public input to solve things beyond what we're just doing here today. And so those could be opportunities for us to look at links and things like that, but not yet.
I think there's an opportunity to actually have, do some long-range planning on that back way. If there's two potentials, you know, that business probably isn't going to go away. And I know there's always been a problem with that, with low-water crossing. I can't imagine what a bridge costs to build over that, but over the last 20 years, it's come up a few times when it's flooded. So, yeah, I'm anxious to see a long-range plan in that back area.
Those are good, that's good input for the future, yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if you want to talk about that, we, some of that's towards Ian.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to keep speaking up, but I just want to address Connie's issue. I think it's great that she's bringing up these topics of thinking outside the box. The only concern I would have is any access out to Madison would go right through the West Granite Creek Park that we just decided that we were all going to protect. So that really, in my opinion, isn't an option, because that is supposed to be designated as open space permanently. So I just want to bring that up.
No worries. I'll move forward. So in addition to the analyses that we performed, we also performed a field review to evaluate existing infrastructure conditions. Based on the observations during our field review, we developed some general recommendations for the study intersections, as well as some recommendations for the entire corridor. For our corridor recommendations, we recommended a refresh of pavement markings. Pavement markings were found to have normal wear and tear, so they're ready to be restriped. In a few areas, we noticed vegetation from adjacent property was overgrown into the sidewalk, affecting the pedestrian access routes. We also had a handful of signage recommendations. These included speed limit signs, bike route signs, as well as an ahead plaque to be added to an existing pedestrian walk sign. This is just to convey to vehicles that they're approaching the Granite Street Crossing ahead. So moving to site-specific observations and recommendations, starting on the west end at McCormick Street, curb ramps at the intersection appeared to be in good condition. However, they were missing truncated domes. So we recommend installation of those. There's an existing T-intersection sign located currently on the east-
I'm sorry, what is a truncated dome that's missing?
Sure. I'll move forward. Actually, in my slides, I have a photo. You guys are getting a sneak peek here. So there's an image, the top-left image is the truncated dome. So they're raised, they're raised domes so that somebody who has a disability, maybe perhaps using a cane, is able to identify that they're about to enter the street. Yes. Okay, perfect. So as I mentioned, existing T-sign currently located on the east side of the bridge, it's a bit confusing in its current placement. Our recommendation is to relocate that to the west side of the bridge, 100 feet in advance of the McCormick Street intersection. Finally, there's a stop sign on the south leg of the intersection. And the current stop bar and stop sign is located just a bit farther south than, say, the natural desired stopping point. So our observation was people stop and then creep into the intersection. So there's an opportunity to relocate that sign and stop bar just to the north to put people at that desired, natural desired stopping point. Moving over to the Granite Creek Trail Crossing, there's an existing RRFB. This is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. This was installed, I understand, with recent trail improvements. We found that at the RRFB, existing infrastructure doesn't allow for comfortable pedestrian ADA accommodations. So on the north side of Willis Street, the location of the RRFB, pedestrians are staging in that driveway, and they're hidden from view from westbound traffic. Interestingly, during our field review, we also did not observe any users pushing the RRFB. They simply waited for a gap in traffic and navigated that gap. So therefore, our recommendation is to remove the RRFB. FHWA and ADOT both publish guidance for treatments at uncontrolled crossing locations, which supports the removal of the RRFB. So here, you'll see, so for our facility, two-lane facility with an average daily traffic volume of less than 9,000 and a speed limit of 35 miles, or, sorry, excuse me, 30 miles per hour or less, there are various treatments recommended. However, an RRFB, which is number seven, is not one of these recommended treatments. Our final two recommendations at this location are to install curb ramps, curb ramp accommodations to allow that comfortable pedestrian ADA access, as well as installation of a high-visibility striped crosswalk. Our final location is the Granite Creek intersection, I'm sorry, Granite Street intersection. Our first recommendation is to reconstruct the curb ramp on the northwest corner of the intersection, as slopes appeared too steep for comfortable pedestrian use. We're also recommending reconstruction of the curb ramp on the northeast corner of the intersection. With this reconstruction, our recommendation is to bump out that corner curb ramp. This would increase pedestrian visibility around the on-street parking that currently exists along Willis Street. This would be similar to the intent that has already been implemented with the striped radius that we see there today. Bumping out this curb ramp would allow us to remove the skew that currently exists in the crosswalk on the north leg of the intersection. It's also going to have the benefit of decreasing the pedestrian crossing distance across Willis Street. So this is really reducing the pedestrians' exposure in the roadway.
Have there been any pedestrian vehicle accidents recorded there?
I don't believe we noted any in ours.
Yeah, not in that five-year period. I would be remiss to say no, because I don't know offhand. But I don't recall it being specifically talked about at, like, PB-TAC, which we typically-
Have any of these 28 recorded traffic accidents had the drivers interviewed to figure out why that accident occurred?
Yeah. So in, pretty much in all cases, when the drivers are available and the police are taking the report, they'll interview both drivers and any witnesses. So typically, it has a narrative section, and then a drawing that shows, and then there's fault admission and things like that. And then usually, a statement from the officer indicating kind of what he determines to be what actually happened. So, yeah, we do have that information.
So what are your conclusions from it? Do you have any trends here? They're all different?
So I think you mentioned that a lot of them are angled in left turn. I don't know if you want to speak to that, but-
Yeah, absolutely. The biggest thing that jumps out to me is a high percentage of them are no injury crashes. And this really conveys property damage only, running into infrastructure, other, you know, parked vehicles, things of that nature. There was, there were no fatal crashes, and there were two, within the five-year period, we saw two incapacitating incapacitating- There was, there were no fatal crashes and there were two, within the five-year period, we saw two incapacitating injury crashes. Outside of that, as Ian mentioned, angle and left turn crashes, very common at intersection approaches, particularly here at Granite Street where we have the two-way stop control. People, people aren't always so good at navigating the gaps in traffic, and that's common.
So are they thinking that the other traffic, cross traffic is going to stop?
Sometimes that can.
Yes, yeah, so I would agree that, and sometimes you just make a decision. Let's say you're coming northbound on Granite Street and you need to turn. You just take a gap that's too small, you, you miss the fact that that car's coming. You just make a judgment error or otherwise do something that's, you know, causes a crash. Crashes aren't accidents.
That's not going to go away with the four-way stop. They're still going to have bad judgment.
Typically, what happens with a four-way stop is because the cars are stopping, you don't have to then take those unnecessary risks to take gaps. Here, what we find is it's a very congested area. A lot of people are coming westbound and they're turning left. There's pedestrians, it's, there's, there's like angled parking blocking your view. So you're making decisions in a hurried way. When you have a four-way stop, typically you just need to make eye contact and take your turn. So typically, we will see some of these things, those types of crashes will be mitigated through that, and you can add on to that.
Yeah, I would say, Ian, you're, the other side of it is the people traveling along Willis Street who are not necessarily expecting someone to jump out in front of them. They now have to stop, so they're not traveling at the same speeds. They, they have a much easier time reacting because they're already, you know, starting from a slow speed. Even if they, even if two people start to go at the same time, they're, the reaction is a lot easier.
Yeah, what's the breakdown between the 71, 46 vehicles? How many are coming across and how many are actually proceeding on Willis?
So that number is reflective of the traffic along Willis Street. So, so that data was collected east of, or excuse me, west of Granite Street, and it's just collecting eastbound, westbound traffic.
So that's, I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, I see so many people on their cell phones. They're either texting or listening or not paying attention.
Yes.
And then maybe they decide to pull out without thinking and, or they're distracted and that ends up creating a, an accident. But, you know, people who are bad drivers are going to be bad drivers, whether there's a four-way stop or not. And you're talking about maybe five accidents a year?
Yeah, so.
You got builds of visibility issues, you got situations where occasionally we actually get a monsoon. So, you know, weather is a factor, there's a lot of different factors here.
But I think one of the, one of the things you look at specifically with like signal warrants is you can correct angled and turn crashes through implementation of these higher controls. That's one of the warrants specifically. So studies have shown, national standards show, that if you have a problem with like left turn decision-making and these taking of gaps and these crashes, they are susceptible to correction or reduction through implementation of these types of traffic control measures. That's why they have a warrant specifically that calls out, look at a crash history and you can implement these things and reduce that. I mean, so the only other thing I can offer is that we as a city have kind of, we are dedicated to trying to reduce crashes in our city. And I know there weren't a lot of high-speed crashes that caused injury and things, but a goal of council is for staff to reduce crashes and do these sorts of things. So this does support that. It will also address just the need to not remove, you know, you could remove parking and solve a lot of issues with site visibility, for instance. But that's a commodity in this city, especially where you have development of places that have more and more need for parking. And so we're trying to just take all these factors in and offer what can, what can really address these things in a way that, it is a compromise. But I, I agree, when I read crashes, they're caused by drivers. That's why I don't call them accidents, because they're not accidents.
Yeah.
They are, that's why they're being cited, that's why it's someone's fault. And if we could take away the human condition and make people pay more attention, that would be great. But we seem to be struggling with that.
Yeah, that's right. Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I drive that intersection at least four times a day. I can't even tell you how many pedestrians I've seen almost get hit at that intersection. So the fact that we haven't had any is, is a blessing, frankly. The other thing is that, and I've heard from other constituents that do frequent that business that's doing very well up Granite Street. And they, you can see, this is a perfect picture, you can see where they have to stop. If they're leaving and going south, they have to stop at that line. They can't see to their left. And they know cars, when you think it's clear, then you turn to your right because cars are whipping around the other curve. And you're trying to see over a bridge and around the corner, and then you turn to the left and then the lights change and now the cars are coming this way. So just the way we've designed that intersection, and it's the exact same thing from people coming up north up Granite Street, are doing the same thing, looking to the right, looking to the left. If you're stopped where that line is, where you're supposed to be stopped, you can't see past the bridge. So people are entering the intersection, they're going five more feet into the middle of the crosswalk to be able to see left, to be able to know whether they're safe. So I, you know, was like, I wish we had met warrants for a light because I do think the Willis is the cross. But if the light could be triggered, that if someone's there, it stops everyone and they can get out. But I understand we haven't met the warrant, so. But I do think how we align that whole intersection so people can see. They literally, they'll all stop, but you know, I love the fact that you're putting the stop signs right in the middle of the lane on Willis. Because there's so much going on when you come whipping around McCormick that you're looking for people walking across the street. I'm worried that you're taking out the blinker, I really am. Because people whip around Willis so fast, coming off McCormick Street and whipping around, that again, that's another place, I've almost seen accidents at least every week. I almost, people are just missing each other. So I'm really glad we're doing something. And I'm really glad that Simpo, I had talked to Bryn months ago, and I was like, please study this intersection. Because these are good problems to have when a section of town that used to be dead is now revitalized. But our current design is, is a death away from us having to do a lot more than what you're even proposing here. I'm very concerned about this intersection. So I do think, at least with all the constituents I had a chance to talk to in two or three days that have raised this intersection, they were all satisfied with an always stop as a good short-term solution. But I do think the design of the intersection and how some parts are further back than others is still, is still an opportunity.
Yeah, so, I mean, we've, we've kind of alluded to some different things. But what, what staff sees this as is the first, it's really like a second step. Initially, when Founding Fathers wasn't there, there was not much going on. We didn't have Hilton and we didn't have them, and we didn't have the splash pad. There was nothing going on up there, and so things were working relatively well. Then all of a sudden, we had these changes, and that's good, but we have traffic. And so that's the interim striping that you see. Now we're looking at, hey, it's not quite working well enough and we need to see what we need to do. So that's where we are today. But this is just like another step towards making this safer as we then go into this downtown study. The Move 2050 RTP that Simpo's wrapping up on as well, it's just good info. They've identified the Granite Creek Bridge due to age, it's over 100 years old. And it's, it was built at a time where the sidewalks weren't the same width, the roadway wasn't the same width. That's why it's a narrow choke point and it's very low. There hopefully will be opportunity in the future for us to look at maybe grant opportunities because it's identified as needing replacement. And maybe if we can rebuild that along with these other things that we're going to get from all the public input of the downtown, maybe we have opportunity to rebuild Willis Street in a way that allows the greenway to not even go up on the road, to go under where it should be. And so that's solving some of those. I'll also say that these are recommendations of a study that we paid Burgess and Niple to do for us, and they're recommending certain things happen. The city will make the ultimate decision as to what we do at the Greenways Trail. That's just, that's the fact of it. And so we're still determining that, you'll see that in the last slide. Whether or not we take the RRFB out, those are recommendations and those are good tools. But they are tools, and there is some flexibility for engineers in the city to make their own decisions. And it's not recommending you get to the next step, but it's not saying you cannot do that. It's just saying, hey, it's, you, you haven't triggered that. Normally, you'd want a little more traffic or a little more. So we're still determining those things. So that's just a little more background.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Ian, I do, just like Lois, I question the wisdom of taking that flashing light out. I mean, we've already paid for it, it's there, it's not hurting anything. It actually does help. So what is the reasoning behind now taking something out that we've already paid for?
So I think the way they think is that they, they have a toolbox and you escalate up kind of in the amount of visibility or the amount of cost or what would be required. So they're really looking at it is, at the minimum, what do you need? You need a marked crosswalk, you need advisory signs, and then what's the next step? Maybe high-visibility crosswalks? And so you step up, that, and it helps agencies when people go, well, why don't we just put in a full pedestrian signal? Well, if you don't meet those conditions, and, and it also sets uniformity so the driving public can know what to expect when it's there. We need to make the changes that Burgess and Niple is recommending because we don't have ADA curb ramps where we're, we're currently bringing up a trail and there's just a vertical curb. And so we did kind of, it kind of got thrown in because we knew people were using it, but we need to fix some things. And then those are the things like relocating it away from the alley, putting in ADA curb ramps, making sure the crossing's appropriate and it has the signing. But can we retain the RRFB? Yes, using engineering judgment of the city's staff, we can do that. And there's been no decision made. One of the conversations we had early on was, they knew that we had put that in and they were going to make a recommendation to remove it. And they asked me, you know, my thoughts regarding that. And I said, you can make that recommendation and then the city will decide what we will do.
Yeah, because you know, if you, if you see, if you note, I don't know what time that bar closes and I'm not a big drinker myself, but can you imagine, you know, dead of night, it's dark and people are emptying out the bars and they've had a few to drink? That, I think that flashing light, I mean, I've even used it just trying to get across there. It, it should probably stay, I think, you know?
Yeah, and so, so what we'll do is, as we are implementing these recommendations, we'll make the changes that we need to make. And then we'll ensure, like, they looked at lighting, they looked at other things too. We're not talking about every little detail here. But we will make sure that we have a safe crossing. And then if we want to keep that, we will keep that. And that's, that's just, that's, that's the fact of it, so.
Councilman Gamboge.
Somewhere in the vicinity of eight years ago, our daughter totaled a car at that intersection. So I think a four-way is a good idea for two reasons. One, it gets people to stop so you don't have to, you have more time to see if you can make a left turn. Also, from my days in, on the Traffic and Safety Committee out in Palos Verdes Estates, I don't think you can have a crosswalk unless you have a stop sign. And that's the way it was in California, I don't know if it's the way it is here.
Yeah, yeah, yep, you, you can have a uncontrolled crossing here, in, in Arizona certainly, and I think likely in California. But you should follow certain guidelines in, in regards to how it's marked. But if we had an intersection here and we used to have, you know, let's say we had no crossings there, that's a, that's an intersection, it's a legal crossing. And so those, those rules still apply. But we're not looking for the minimum, we're looking for what's safe and what's best for everyone. So that's why we have all this stuff shown, yeah.
Well, I know sometimes when they have events there at Founding Fathers, a lot of people park in that
Yeah.
Dirt parking lot.
Yes.
And then walk down to the facility. So that increases the number of pedestrians dramatically when that happens.
Yeah, this, the four-way will certainly help the comfort and safety of pedestrians using this location. And the fact is that this used to be on kind of like the fringe of downtown. But with Hilton and Founding Fathers and the splash pad and like council's decision to like keep Granite Creek Park and these things, this is really an area that's just going to continue to grow. I mean, I know personally that the event, the venue, the bridge, people go there to take photos. It's a heavily used pedestrian area and it will continue to grow in both traffic and those things. So that's why it's included in the downtown study we're going to do, or Simpo's going to do with us.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, going back to the downtown study, so we'll solve this short term. But for me, the, the game of chicken with McCormick Street intersection with Willow, Willis, the people wanting to go through the stop sign, but all of a sudden a car comes whipping around the corner and everybody's braking and the people who are coming left on Willis, they start braking because they don't know if they're at a T-intersection and they're supposed to stop. So there's like constant chicken games going on and someone hits the gas. That's why I want to keep the RRFB there. If you, and I actually love Cortez, where Union Street hits Cortez because the light's in the middle of the road blinking at you. So if you want to save pedestrians, that'd be another place I'd, down the road, put the light right in the middle of the road at the crosswalk because people whipping around McCormick have feet to stop. And if you miss the light, dusk that time of day, it gets pretty dark with the trees. So I'm glad we're looking at all of this, this is well overdue and very supportive.
I would add too, we don't touch on it today, but for the RRFB, for the trail crossing location, you know, to Ian's point, there are many tools in the toolbox and really a lot of it on our end comes down to agency preference and, and what's going to work for, for the users in this area. So at that specific location, you know, we're recommending a, a high-visibility crosswalk. There's additional simple pavement markings that we can put in, PED crossing ahead, that would, you know, add that attention as drivers come around that corner. There's also flex tube signs, similar to the always stop control. We can put them right in the middle of the, you know, lane divider and, and add that in there as well. So not to say those have to replace the RRFB, but just to add to, there are a lot of tools in the toolbox and definitely understand wanting to, you know, keep pedestrians safe. Another point I just wanted to mention, just because we're having a big conversation about pedestrians at Granite Street and it wasn't specifically shown in the slides. At Granite Street specifically, we have peak hour data for the pedestrians. And in the highest peak hour in the AM and PM, 15 and 25 pedestrians respectively were crossing at Granite Street. And to your point, that's in December and, you know, potentially, potentially higher than that. So, yeah, so, so really that was a big driving force for the always stop control at Granite Street. Interestingly, during our field review, we also had, you know, we attract a lot with our yellow vests when we're out there. So we did have someone stop us while he was driving and say, are we getting a stop sign? So it does appear that, that users are in favor of the, the always stop control. Okay, I think we touched on all that. And, you know, we've been having a big discussion about it today, but I'll just mention again, we are recommending installation of the always stop control. We're recommending signs are installed on both the left-hand and right-hand sides of the road just to increase that, that awareness for, for users as they're coming up to the Granite Street intersection. MUTCD also provides guidance for temporary signage that would be installed ahead of the always stop control just to, just to further alert users that that traffic control condition is changing at Granite Street. Final recommendations for the entire intersection. We're recommending installation of truncated domes at all curb ramps. We're also recommending that all four legs of the intersection are striped with that high-visibility crossing. Again, just to, just to further enhance the awareness for, for the heavy pedestrian usage in that area. So I'll throw it over to Ian to talk about implementation.
Well, as long as we can keep the striping updated, instead of having it get so faded and broken that hardly anybody sees it.
I think.
But with our plans for bringing our striping in-house, I think that would be a great expectation that those stripes will be visible throughout the year.
Yep, I think, is budget adoption today? Yeah, could you go to the next slide? I think there's just, that's the last slide, so. This is our last slide, this is really just about, it was mentioned, you know, we obviously are going to get rid of the skew on the, the corners. But we basically have kind of, we've been talking about, this is like the, the first stage. But we'll, we'll consider this all still first stage next steps. But we want to, in the short term, install the four-way stop at Granite. We'll do the modifications to the striping and refreshing everything that's old, making all the changes that have kind of been talked to, and there's probably more in the report. Make all the signing changes and do some of the landscape trimming. We really have a goal of, you know, by the end of summer. We're not tying it down yet because we don't have the exact timeframes on all these things and some of them involve the use of streets and some other divisions besides transportation.
So what's the budget on this?
What was that?
How much is this all going to cost?
So on the short-term stuff, I haven't calculated out the cost, but, you know, we do have an existing contract with our existing striper still. So all that will fall within the budget that we currently have for this year. So any oblit, obliteration and then restriping. But if I was to put a number on all this and, and the changes to signing will all be internal to our department. and, and the changes to signing, will all be internal to our department. Landscape trimming would likely be streets. I would guess that this is going to cost short-term implementation somewhere in the range of $5,000 to $5,000 to $6,000, something like that. Minimal, minimal cost.
How about the longer term? It's going to be...
Longer term, there's some cost involved, because we have ADA curb ramp construction, things like that. Some of this stuff is going to fall likely with either our concrete contract, or maybe similar to what we did by Colt Grill, where when we were doing the Ballard project, and we had the, the jock in place with some of our encores, I would expect that we might do some of those things at Greenways Trail, using that ability. So there will be cost involved, I mean, certainly in the $10,000 to $20,000 range or more. But I don't have any plans right now to do the median bulbout construction, we don't have any projects to identify these things, so we'll have to move towards that. But we can make the changes and implement them without doing like the actual curb bulbout. Yeah, stop signs, yes.
Sounds really good.
So basically, implementation of these things, and then we'll, we'll work towards diligently getting the truncated domes done, the, you know, because those can be cut in and retrofit. And then we've got the ADA new curb ramp construction, we talked about like a Granite Creek, and then the last leg of the longer term would be the actual bulbouts, where we actually extend the curbing out into the roadway, like in that drawing on the right. And then again, this is just, this is kind of still a long-term, short-term kind of solution as we go through those other processes, but we'll have a good interim, safe condition while we figure out what this all really looks like.
Mayor Proten.
I'm all for getting this done as quick as possible. So far, we've been able to escape some kind of a fatality, or, you know, you never know. So I'm happy that we're doing it. But, you know, I do have a question, and I'm not sure, Ian, you can answer this, might be Dallin's question. Dallin, when, when a business like Founding Fathers pulls a permit to close off the road, is there any requirement for traffic, like, you know, policemen to come and manage that traffic? Because when they pour out of there from the, in front of the actual business, it, it backs all the way up to that low-water crossing, I've seen it, and it's really hard. And then they end up cutting through the hotel, and I know the hotel doesn't want that. But is there a requirement that is attached to that type of a permit, that on really busy weekends, that they would have to have some, you know, traffic policeman out there?
Yeah, so any event that's part of the consideration in the permit, and so we would look at that. I haven't looked at their specifically, or the size of their events, because usually there's a threshold based on the number of people attending. So we could look at that, but traffic is one of the areas you look at anytime somebody's trying to pull a permit.
Yeah, the events are fine, and I've watched them grow. I mean, I went to the first couple ones, and they weren't that well-attended, and now they're pretty well-attended. So again, it's doubling, doubling the business.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you. The only thing I'd ask also be added to the short-term plan is a communication plan. First, with the businesses, the local businesses, so they're all like, "Yeah, this is great, they can start talking to their customers about it." And then, secondly, a public communication plan, so people are aware this is coming, and it can't, like, multiple times this summer, talking about it, especially the minute you install something, send out another blast. So I think people will see that, if we are proactive in our communication, they'll see it as a positive thing. If they get surprised by hitting a stop sign, is when we'll get complaints, so I'm just trying to be proactive. Thank you.
Yeah. I know Gwen was sensitive to this one, just because we're looking at this, and we have some other stuff that we'll be sharing with you in the future about some other intersections, but these downtown ones, we, we certainly understand. Yeah. I think that's all we have, unless there's any other questions.
Any other comments or concerns? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate all the acronyms.
I tried to spell, I tried to list them out, I was like, they're common nature to me, but they, yeah. Thank you.
I'm adding truncated domes to my vocabulary. With that said, this meeting's adjourned.